Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a special meeting order right now, seven thirty five Monday, July sixth. Go call please.
Okay, Mayor Ta.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Contras.
Here.
Councilmember Doe is absent and Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do we have any speaker?
So, we did receive some ecomments. So, I'll go through the ecomments first. Okay. Okay. So, the first ecomment that we received is from Janice Davis. And let me switch the camera to me. Okay, so the first comment we received is from Janice Davis and it says, Chu Tai lacks professional qualifications and personal integrity to be appointed to the top executive post in the city of Westminster. He has no experience as city manager, was removed from his last two jobs within the cities of Monterey Park and Stanton. In his own sworn testimony, he admitted to violating the city of Monterey Park personnel rules and regulations, including the use of his city-issued credit card for personal purchases multiple times, failed to disclose he was personal friends with the sales rep for an ERP financial software package the city was considering and the improper purchase of an iPhone seven and Android phone under the name of a former employee of the city of Monterey Park. During the interview hiring process with the city of Monterey Park, he failed to disclose he left employment with his previous employer, City of Stanton, under a separation agreement. In March 2018, he filed a lawsuit against City of Monterey Park for unlawful termination, Superior Court of State California for the county of LA. City of Monterey Park vigorously defends itself and after personally reading over 600 pages of court documents, which are a matter of public record, it's clear Chu Tai repeatedly violated personnel rules and regulation, failed to improperly do his job and failed to adequately supervise and coach his direct reports in the finance department, among other shortcomings. I'm both disappointed and disillusioned with the mayor of the city of Westminster for even considering someone who clearly lacks experience and qualifications to be a city manager, especially at this time in the history of our city. It's clear no one contacted his three previous employers to determine if he is eligible for rehiring or even took the time to Google his name. After the failed Westminster recall election, I gave everyone a clean slate and the opportunity to move forward. Unfortunately, I'm again disappointed by the gross incompetence and self-serving decisions being made by our mayor. And that's from Janice Davis. The next one is from Deborah Mariscal and it says, I'm deeply concerned about the gentleman being considered for the city manager position. After doing some research on my own from LinkedIn and a website I subscribe to for various personal information, I have to say I'm extremely disappointed that this man would even be considered for this position. Based on his own resume on LinkedIn, he has no experience as a city manager per his profile. He's a partner at revenue and cost specialist, which he joined in 2018. Based on his personal LinkedIn profile and other information I was able to obtain, there's no way this gentleman could be, would be able to properly fulfill the duties of this position at this time. Our city is in a perilous financial position and we cannot afford to have someone with this man's employment history in this critical role. I understand that the council is not able to research the candidates on your own. However, the recruiter, Bob Hall and Associates, did not do their due diligence, in my opinion. Based on his LinkedIn profile, he and his staff absolutely did not do their job. I looked at his website. Interestingly enough, his business address is at an apartment complex and his past career business address, sorry, his past career experience, he certainly should have researched Mr. Tai thoroughly to address his recent job history. Separation agreement is normally a legal reference for termination and there's still an active lawsuit with the city of Monterey Park, in which the city is defending itself for the reasons for terminating Mr. Tai. Quite honestly, if Mr. Tai cannot tell the difference in credit cards from personal and business, I in no way want him dealing with our city's finances. In his own deposition, he admits that he became distracted by his children when making purchases using the city's credit card instead of his own. Now, I have two debit cards from the same bank, one's personal, one's for business. I have no problem keeping them separated because I cannot pay, because I pay attention. Even though he paid the city back, it never should have happened. It was negligent. He's a poor candidate choice and I'm disappointed that any of you consider this man. There must be other candidates that are current interim city managers doing a fine job. We should not be jumping into a hasty decision just for the sake of filling the position. In my business experience, those who interview the best are often the worst for the job. Westminster is close to crisis mode and we cannot afford any more mistakes. And that one's from Deborah Mariscal. Next one is from Nguyen Hong. Ladies and gentlemen, it's known that during the city's special meeting on Monday evening of July 6th, the city will officially approve a candidate named Chu Tai to the position of city manager. I use the word approval because through the popular notice in the regular decision, I know with the overwhelming majority by Tam Nang Bang, game of three, his, so this candidate will be admitted. Therefore, I, as a Westminster resident of more than 40 years, write this letter completely against the decision for the following reasons. Number one, basic conditions for selecting employees, capabilities, achievements and professional ethics. So, which criteria did Chu Tai candidate will be chosen by the council? About capability, Mr. Tai has never worked as an assistant or general manager of any city in America. In the profile, he declared as a director of management services could be a literal word because according to the contents of the Pasadena Star newspaper written about that event, Mr. Chu Tai was fired on April, April 4, 19, 2017. He was only the head of finance. About achievement, do you know Mr. Chu Tai is a member of the Investigation Referral Agency Revenue and Cost Specialist for the city of Westminster? Our professional ethics, did you know that he used his credit card of the city of Monterey Park to use on a personal trip with his family through New York? Also, in the code of ethics, it's common for agencies, especially government administrations, to never hire a person who has one or more lawsuits in court, whether in the role of plaintiff or defendant. In this case, Monterey Park is a defendant and also a city administrative agency like Westminster. So, this recruitment is an act of revenge for Mr. Chu Tai to the city of Monterey Park or the least is a conflict of interest. Have you ever thought that this hiring would create a lack of tactic relations with the city of Monterey Park when this employee had been dismissed because of unethical conduct that was feud with money from taxpayers in Monterey Park? Thinking further that, but I do not think you have any implicit deal with Mr. Tai to give him the opportunity to prove that he was dishonored or nonsense with a secret under table. In the process of working with the city with a length of service of over 12 years and during this time in the council now, mayor, our city received only more sad news than glad to say it total failure. This failure is praised by the public as a financial crisis corruption resulting in the city's compensation for this loss amounting to tens of millions of dollars. Worse still, the losers are the people of Westminster and not you. Today, with the hiring of a person with a bad record of the misuse of money in City of Monterey Park, which was accepted by the city of Westminster Executive Director, I fear there will be instability and dark clouds with, will continue to cover in our city. The future, which is a direct disadvantage, is still our residents by increasing sales tax by you. I warn of this financial collapse of Mayor Chi Tae in Vietnam in what would you call a communist country. Mayor Ta was laid off for damaging property losses of the city. It seems that the communists are not worse than the democracy of Mr. Chi Tae. I strongly welcome and agree with your employment decision. If you'd like to add the words, Westminster City Councilman staff will be fully responsible for accepting Mr. Chu Tai and will use the money by individuals, not city money, to pay court costs if a resident's lawsuit is filed against this employment. I would be the first to sue. Sincerely thank you for reading and listening to people's aspirations and constructive citizens. This is the period we skipped, we skip the path to shake hands together to build a better city for Westminster rather than using Westminster as headquarters to do business, exchange, deal, go to gain the profit for a group interest or individual like you have in the past. I let you choose the right path instead of us being each other's enemies. This decision is yours, not ours, because we do not have any rights except the unique status of ordinary people in the city of over 70,000. And there's a website with court documents involving Mr. Tai and the city of Monterey Park. Best regards, Nguyen Hong. Next one, next one was, let's see. All right, Jennifer Gremling. I've learned a few things regarding the hiring regarding the candidate for the city manager position, Mr. Tai, and I feel strongly that this guy should not be hired. We need a qualified individual who has experience as a city manager and someone to help ensure the city will not survive the tough times but thrive going forward. I'm astounded that the council would even consider Mr. Tai for this job. I sincerely, I seriously hope this council does the right thing during the special closed session meeting on Monday night. You must immediately withdraw any employment offer to Mr. Tai. And that's from Jennifer Gremling. Next one's Diane Talofson. And it says, hearing the news of your hiring of a new city manager, I urge you not to make any appointment at this time. Let us resolve, let us hear the resolve of the legal action against the man you were thinking of appointing. Until then, continue with the acting city treasurer as your city manager. I would like to have a person with successful history and good standing with all previous positions. We have enough problems in these days and do not need any more drama. Again, that was Diane Talofson. Susan Rodriguez writes, I have been following the recent news regarding the city manager candidate Chu Tai and would like to officially oppose his hiring at this time. At a bare minimum, it appears he has not been thoroughly vetted and if he has, I find it disturbing that he would be hired given his troublesome background with former employers. The fact that he is currently involved in wrongful termination litigation with his most recent employer is just one of the several red flags. The city of manager, or I'm sorry, the city of Westminster must do better. Please do not vote to hire Chu Tai as a new city manager. And that again was Susan Rodriguez. Tanya Samoff says, as a resident of Westminster and a lifelong public servant, I'm dismayed that you are even considering a contractual agreement with someone with such dubious ethics and a negative public employment history for city manager. I did not have to go over the details of Mr. Tai's employment history, as I am sure you are all well aware of it now. I'm requesting no contract be entered with Mr. Tai and the city requests to be refunded. Any funds paid to Bob Hall and Associates. Thank you. And that's again Tanya Samoff. And then the last ecomment received is from Joy Hild and it states, I'm writing, as many others, in regards to the hiring of Chu Tai as city manager. I've sent the following to the council members and I'm sending to you as well. Now that his past city employment issues have been made known, please reconsider. He has no experience in city management and his character is questionable. Also, please take into consideration the fact that he is currently in a lawsuit with his former city of employment. Is that our time to be, is that to be our future as well? His court records and testimony have been posted and his, his reticence to answer a direct question under oath in regards to termination should be enough of a red flag. But if that is not enough, he used a city credit card to make personal purchases. He did not disclose his personal relationship and socialization with a better and subsequent winner of a city contract for software in the high six figures. He also made purchases for cell phones under another employee's name, knowing that the employee no longer worked there. Considering also that we as citizens have been made well, made aware of all this and we know you have been as well. We do not wish our city to be newsworthy for reasons such as these. Please do not allow this. Please reconsider and show that you have legitimate concern for our city by not allowing someone, someone of questionable integrity to be placed in charge of city management. We deserve better. So, I implore you to take this matter seriously. And that one's from Joy Hild. At this time, that's all I have for public comments under ecomments, but we also have speakers. So, let's see, so I'm going to allow the first speaker to speak. I have five so far. So, if there's anybody who wants to speak, just make sure you raise your hand and I'm just going to go down the order in which the hands are raised here. Jessica Lost, now you're up.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay.
I just want to briefly remark that.
I'm sorry, hold on a second. I think I'm having trouble hearing you. So, give me a second. I could, me, I got muted though. I think all the mics are, yeah, all the mics are muted. Hold on. All right, let's. Jessica, you want to go ahead and try?
Can, can you hear me?
Better? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
All right, I just want to briefly remark that as far as I understand, none of the council was made aware of the previous employment allegations. So, I understand that that's going to be explored this evening. And mostly, I just want to remark about the candidate's lack of experience. The fact that he has not been a deputy or assistant or a city manager, that concerns me because I don't want Westminster to sort of be his training ground. And so, I'm hoping that you're going to be able to look into the allegations tonight and maybe explore whether or not this is the right candidate for the job. Thank you very much.
All right, next speaker is Roger Mendrum. Roger, can you? Roger?
Hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay. Hello, good evening. This is Roger Mendrum, resident of Westminster. Mr. Mayor, council member, thank you for having this meeting and allowing us to present our feelings on the subject of this meeting. I am speaking to you tonight to express my strong opposition of your possible hiring of Mr. Chu Tai. Although we, the residents, aren't fully aware of the exact conversation that is about to take place tonight in your closed session meeting, there are many of us who have been able to research, investigate and figure out a whole hell of a lot. I do want to acknowledge and give thanks to my neighbors, my friends, who so strongly care about the health and future sustainability of the city. I won't mention their names. They know who they are. Thank you for working so hard to do the vetting of this candidate for city manager that someone else failed to do. Now, I will give you some benefit of the doubt to the council members. Maybe this information was withheld from you and maybe these are new revelations and hopefully this meeting tonight is so you can correct course and alleviate a potential disaster for the city. I am an optimistic person, so I will hope and pray you make the right decision tonight and rescind any possible agreement or potential contract here to hire this man, Mr. Chu Tai. For what I have learned about this man, way too many red flags and unethical actions. He is 100% wrong for this position, unqualified and with a very scary track record of suing and currently suing a city of prior employment. And I've seen documentation evidence in his own words of him violating the city policy and that involving money malfeasance on his part. From what I have read, his resume should not have even left the desk of the hired recruiter, Mr. Bob Hall. And two, should not have even been considered by this council. I read the contract agreement between the city and recruiter, Mr. Bob Hall. There's a clause regarding negligence on the part of the recruiter, Mr. Bob Hall. This, to me, is malpractice and negligence and we, the residents of Westminster, expect a full refund or a full non-payment to him in reference to the negligence clause of this contract. It is negligent to be paid to refer this man, who is so obvious, will be a complete disaster in so many ways for the city. I will leave it to some of my neighbors who I expect to show more detail of this man's negatives, so you can hopefully make the right decision here and discontinue any further consideration of Mr. Chu Tai. I've had communications with several of my fellow neighbors and I know you've received many letters, written correspondence also, and I am confident they will present in detail several reasons why Mr. Chu Tai is completely and emphatically wrong for the city manager job. And I implore you, I beg of you, do not hire this man. He should not even be considered. So, please, change course, have patience to find the right person for this most crucial position, city manager. Please do the right thing here. Many lives, many, many lives depend on this. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Jody Boyd. Okay, Jody? Trying to, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, it kept saying that you were muting me and I know you don't want to.
No. Okay.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. This is mayor and city council. This is Jody Boyd of Westminster. If there was ever a meeting where we needed to first say the prayer, I think tonight would have been it. I'm very, very disappointed and surprised that Mr. Chu Tai is being considered for the position of city manager. I did take the time as soon as his name was released to both look at his background as posted publicly on LinkedIn. I also went to his current employer and was able to obtain his short bio and his resume there. I was shocked that he has no experience in city management or assistant city management. In fact, all he has is a series of successive lateral positions that are barely even advancements. I then took his resume and bio and I went to the recruiter, Bob Hall. I went to his website and I looked up current and previous postings for other local cities that are looking for an assistant city manager or a city manager. And it became very apparent that Mr. Tai is not qualified even in those cities. Some are much smaller than ours, other, others are slightly larger. I don't know how he even made it to the final cut. And I also, if you think about it, at this point, Sherri Johnson, our interim city manager, has more hands-on city management experience than Mr. Tai. So, this is a current concern for a city of our size, even under normal times. And we are not in normal times. You know, I have a hunch that the city attorneys are going to advise you that you must disregard all of the legal information that we found. And so, if this is an objection sustained, forget you ever heard or saw that. I will add, though, that somebody in the vetting process should have reached out to all of his previous employers to find out if he was eligible for rehire and to confirm why he left. And I think that in the interview process directly with this gentleman, he should have been more forthcoming. It's, it's not up to the citizens to find out, you know, that he was removed from his two previous public service positions. But we did. And I will say that, and I'm going to be completely open and honest, I am one of the citizens who obtained the court documents and put up the money to purchase them and download them. I read over 600 pages and I was nauseated by the time I get into the 10th page. So, we really need to just hit the brakes. He's not qualified. He should not be eligible. And we need to look for and hire a strong, experienced and talented leader who people will believe in and will help bring big ideas to our city and help guide us forward. That's all I have. And again, I really, this evening, I pray for our city and I pray that our mayor and city council do the right thing, not only for us, but for this gentleman. Thank you.
That's messing up. Okay, so next speaker, next speaker is Deborah Mariscal.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Christine, thank you so much for reading the information that I, that I sent in earlier. I appreciate that. And Vice Mayor Ho, I appreciate that you responded to me. You were the only one that acknowledged my email. I would like to personally say that I don't know Bob Hall. I don't know Mr. Tai at all. I did not look at all of the information, legal information before I made my decision. I do subscribe to a service where I can do some background checking. And also, I am very involved in LinkedIn, so it was pretty easy for me to go in and find some different things. We, we need a leader. I agree with Jody. We need leaders to get us through not only the COVID thing, but our regular financial problems as well. And we have elected the council to do the right thing for our city. I consider you fiduciarily responsible. If you do decide to hire this person, you are responsible for whatever he does. Now, I've been a life and health insurance agent for 30 years. I'm very good at what I do. Does that mean that I could run a multimillion dollar company? No, I don't have the skill set for that. And it doesn't mean that I couldn't work my way up, but Mr. Tai has not worked his way up. The positions have been more lateral. And with some of the things that have happened in his past employment, we cannot afford another lawsuit. And so, I am requesting that you rescind any offer that was made to him and you also rescind the contract to Bob Hall and Associates. In, in looking at his website, he should have done better vetting and that should have been given to the council. And then, quite honestly, Mr. Tai should have been forthcoming too. I've had a couple of new jobs over the last two years. I'm very open about this is my age. This is how I, you know, this is how I operate. This is what I can offer. Here are my weaknesses. Because guess what? Sooner or later, it's going to come out anyways. You may as well be upfront and honest about it from the beginning. Thank you very much. Oh, Deborah Mariscal, Westminster.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Teri Rains. Teri, go ahead.
I'm here. Good evening, Teri Rains, Westminster. Yesterday, I sent an urgent letter to all of you, providing compelling evidence as to why the city of Westminster cannot hire Mr. Chung Chu Wen Tai as city manager. Since the city utilized the services of a professional recruiter, Bob Hall and Associates, I wrongly assumed this person had been fully vetted. Nothing could be further from the truth and I am shocked this person made it past the initial screening process. Even more shocking, apparently, according to Vice Mayor Ho, the information I provided in my letter, which was all obtained via public records, was not disclosed to council by the recruiter or the applicant during the interview process. If that's true, that alone should void Mr. Tai's application and Mr. Hall's agreement with a refund of fees, because either Mr. Hall or this council is negligent in this matter. Mr. Tai has absolutely no experience as a city manager or even as an assistant city manager. Currently, he is, in my opinion, nothing more than a glorified fee study consultant with revenue and cost specialists. Not exactly a strong precursor to advance directly to the role of city manager for a city of 92,000. His public sector experience is only in finance and related support services. He has worked at nine different cities over 25 years. All are much smaller than Westminster. The scope of his duties and direct management experience is extremely limited. He was fired from the last two cities he worked for, Stanton, population 38,000, and Monterey Park, population 62,000. He was forced to leave Stanton under a separation agreement after only four months on the job. Coincidentally, Bob Hall, the recruiter, was the interim city manager for the city of Stanton in 2018. So, surely, he could have checked with the city of Stanton about Mr. Tai's employment there. Mr. Tai worked for the city of Monterey Park from January 2014 to April 2017 as Director of Management Services. He was placed unpaid administratively by the city on April 19, 2017, so that alleged misconduct by Mr. Tai could be investigated. On April 27, 2017, the city terminated Mr. Tai's employment. On March 6, 2018, Mr. Tai filed a lawsuit against the city of Monterey Park alleging retaliation and defamation, case number BC 696884, demanding a jury trial. The case is ongoing and the city is vigorously defending itself in this lawsuit. If there were any merit to Mr. Tai's allegations, the city would have entered into a settlement agreement with them long ago. In Mr. Tai's own sworn testimony from a videotape deposition taken on January 24, 2019, he admits, one, he violated the city of Monterey Park's administrative policy for credit card usage by using his city-issued credit card for personal purchases on multiple occasions. Two, he failed to disclose that he was personal friends with and attended the wedding of a key representative of a company bidding on a major contract with the city. Three, he made improper purchases of cell phones under the name of a former employee of the city violating city policy. And four, he failed to disclose that he left the city of Stanton after only four months under a separation agreement. So, Mr. Tai's admitted conduct is especially egregious, given he was responsible for the city's finances. Based on his own testimony about interactions with the two, yes, two, direct report employees, one can easily conclude that Mr. Tai's management skills are seriously lacking. According to city staff, when Mr. Tai was terminated from the city, the budget was not on track to be completed on time and had to be completely redone. According to city staff, when Mr. Tai was terminated from the city, the budget was not on track to be completed on time and had to be completely redone. On May 11, 2017, the Los Angeles District Attorney's Office opened an inquiry into allegations that Mr. Tai accepted a bribe from a bidder competing for a city contract. Although the investigation concluded without criminal charges being brought against Mr. Tai, the closing report does state, quote, "Tai's statement is ambiguous as to whether a bribe took place," end quote. Bottom line, Mr. Tai is not qualified for this position of city manager. He has no city manager or assistant city manager experience. He has been fired from his two, last two public sector jobs. He is embroiled in a massive lawsuit with a previous employer. He can't effectively manage just two employees, but he thinks he can manage an entire city? He admits under oath to violating city policies and he failed to disclose any of this apparently to all of you. Do you really want to be the city that hires this person, knowing all of this? That would be negligent on your part. I am appalled this council would even consider Mr. Tai for the manager, city manager position. So tonight, you do the right thing. You must immediately withdraw from the employment negotiations with Mr. Tai and immediately terminate the contract with Bob Holland Associates and demand restitution. Mayor Ta, for some reason, I suspect you support hiring this person. I hope I'm wrong. But regardless of what Mr. Tai has to say tonight, this charade must stop now. And if you don't stop it, the community will step up in a big way to fight this. You can bank on that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Adam Buttons.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Well, you've had a lot of people talk tonight that are angry and frustrated. I too was submitted disinformation via other sources outside of the city, not connected with Jody. And I did some research as well. And I posted it as well. And, you know, I, I'm just disturbed. You know, my background is, you know, I'm not qualified to be a city manager, but I do have a master's in public administration. And I do understand what it is to run a ship. And city manager is one of the most powerful positions that you could possibly hold. They hold more power than you guys on the council. I hate to say it because they run the day-to-day operations. And the city manager affects the lives of many people and affects the lives of us, we the people. My objective objection of him is, is different. I'm not going to sit there and bash his work history. What I'm going to say is I don't like the idea that he's been involved in lawsuits and that he's been fired, you know, from said jobs for misconduct. And the fact that it is, is that Westminster is out of history of having many lawsuits filed against it. And I'm not going to go into that because you guys on the council are well aware of the past. And I'm not going to sit here and bash any of you guys because at this point, it, it doesn't do any good. Because if you have people coming at you with anger and, and, and anger towards you, it's going to close you off from making a well-informed decision of what you need to do now. Look, we've been through a lot, guys. This recall was crazy. You know, COVID-19 is even crazier. We're at a very, very crucial time in the city history. We need a city manager that can lead and can connect with the diverse population of Westminster. And we need to start putting our differences aside and all the anger that we've had. And that's something I've been willing to do as well. Forget what the past is and focus on the future right now. And I implore you, Mr. Mayor, I know in your heart, I know you care about the city, but I know that you're tired and I know that it's been a beating. But I'm employing you and especially Kimberly Ho and Charlie and Sergio and Tai Doe, all five of you, to really put your differences aside, to really come together and work together, to really start putting the citizens first. We're in a very bad time in history. And we need to be a coalition right now, not at odds. So I beg all of you, please, please, consider what you're doing. Find someone in there that would really be good for us, we the people, and for all the, all the employees that work for the city. We the citizens, we're not your enemy. I've, I've often said that, you know, if you, if you don't like what you see, get out there and do something about it. Be the change that you seek. And I'd rather be someone that comes to you wanting to help you. I'd rather come to you to be able to voice my concerns, not just criticize, but to say, hey, we, I'm here to help. And I also want to thank Vice Mayor Kimberly Ho for responding back from my message today when I called her to ask to voice my concerns. If we all operate that way, if like my dad used to teach me, tell the truth once, you never have to tell it again. If you lie once, you got to make a million lies to support that first lie. And it seems that this, this gentleman has been lying and he is making many more not lies to support his first lie. We don't need it. Please, for the love of God, I beg you, give up the ego, please, and think of the bigger picture. Think of Westminster. Think about what we can do. We're supposed to be the all-American city. We are a city that's built on pride. So please, gentlemen and ladies of the council, please do the right thing. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
All right. Last speaker is Hong Nguyen. And if there's anybody else that wanted to speak, just raise your hand who hasn't already spoken. Mr. Nguyen, go ahead.
Okay, hi, everybody. Good evening, mayor. And want people attend today. A council member and a lawyer. I think I agree with everybody say tonight. Only, I already read, sent a letter. Did you, Christine, you will receive it and it will deliver it to on member? Okay, and my point is, in that 14 year, we already been tried to tan city manager. Is that too much? Is a number, it doesn't much send. What wrong on the city? 14 year with tan city manager. And Mayor Keetar, he working 12 year and during that time. So what is going on? And too many corruption. And powered by, you know, the council member or city manager. I remember before, I like it, Don Edison. I think he's the best city manager I've ever met at the Westminster. One I want to recommend today, because the letter I already sent, I don't want to repeat again. I didn't want to mention, how do you select a candidate? Based on, what I got, that the and I think based on, you know, capability, capability, a human and professional ethic. And on that three category, emit the Chu Tai is not qualified for. Okay? And thank you very much. And I will keep fighting. Even I need a lawsuit to fight a city about to admit the Chu Tai if he get higher. But I wish, I praise on the council member should be take a good decision. And if you want to prove, I want to five and oh, or four and oh, or whenever you present tonight. Okay, should be a five and oh, not three and one, not three and two. Okay? Thank you very much for your listen to me. You have a good day.
All right, this is last call. I don't, if there's anybody else who wanted to speak, raise your hand at this time. Okay, seeing none, that is the end of oral communications. And we will be going into closed session at this time. Thank you.